We get that.
And if she's not, I know.
Another one in town.
What's this icon down here?
Well, and.
Just like internet or that's like are so different.
It's just so much more.
Over here either, like our cameras are.
Hi, Lizzy.
How you doing? How you feeling? Welcome back.
A little bit better. How are you all?
Good.
Good.
And now over here.
But yeah, so Kate is not there. Hi, Mike.
How are you?
Good.
How are you feeling?
Good. How are you?
Very good.
Good.
Good to see you back.
Yeah.
I can see you just drag these to the.
It's like we don't.
No, somebody else is here stuff.
Used to work.
I'm checking each where you saw this last.
Fire right now.
You know, to work against for a tiny. So if you.
We're starting to.
Bye.
Okay.
Can you? Yep, right hand icon.
Show her what happened.
Over here.
Nothing.
Now we can you just stand right there.
I can't see a preview in here, but I can see what's going on up there.
Yeah.
Hi, Joel.
Okay.
As long as you can monitor.
Like.
So we got participants to us.
So we're working on that ordinance.
Sweet.
Alyssa started it today. She she had time to do it. I don't have time. She's gonna get a draft this week and I'll take a look at it. Good, good. Hey, there. How are you?
I actually. Thank you. How are you?
Hi.
Sorry.
Actually.
Oh, perfect. In real, yep.
Is there someone bigger?
Oh.
Still all that same kind of. Creating a few devices where it all works. But I see what I.
You want to be able to speed the whole thing.
Do you know what I mean? Like you want to be able to speed up. Hi, Laurie. Thank you.
And you?
It's $2,000.
That's a new one that's. Uh, I'm trying to.
Hi, Ari.
Is that the new one that was.
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't know what's that.
Because Kane said she was waiting for one this evening to give her. So I would ask Kane, the other one we printed from earlier and put in your packet. You might want to ask Kane.
Did you leave on an updated address?
Hi.
Yes.
It's called here for $2,000.
Yep.
Is that what's going to be 1200 or?
Yep, we're gonna. This would be the new. Obviously, I, to be honest, I forgot my mask and I have a disposable mask here. So. Ever wear a bat chest, you have to wear it. I'll wear one. Why not? We're at half and half. I guess it is. Fifty, I don't know. I'm fifty. Wow, whatever. So no one from. Um. I haven't heard from her, but I'm.
So we didn't get a water meter.
I explained the ordinance.
Yes, he has all that in it in your packet. I printed you a new packet.
I'm using a model ordinance to kind of.
Target to grab it earlier today.
While you in the mirror review it and then you can just send it up as a draft.
That's tough.
You can just stamp a draft and send it.
Did you pick up?
We probably do that some.
Nope, we had a paper packet there for you today. We go like this thing, like a big.
No.
He isn't impacting your schedule.
No, I understand.
You can just hear something singing here, right?
I've had an app.
Yeah.
I've had a.
It is in there. Put it in there. There you go.
Differently received from you than.
And it's in order when it gets to public.
Yeah, I mean, I can say, you know, I can ask again, or you could ask one of the two. I I don't know what the best strategy.
All right, um.
Yeah.
We'll start our meeting. Six thirty-two. So we'll do a call to order. Right on that course.
Jim Richards.
Dana Bergner. Or you know that. Is he here?
Okay. Tonight, we have a first thing is a public hearing, and this is for a ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh four, which is for a tiny house development. And it's listed as a conditional use in an R two zoning district. So this is a. A document that planning and zoning have been working on for a year and a half or more from some interest that we originally had for the city and the P N Z went through it and with the mayor or with the attorney. Mike Clarity helping us and with the funding, so they've come up with this document for a public hearing tonight. So. At this time, it was posted and hopefully everybody's had a chance to read it and have some, if you have any questions, I'd like to have you step forward to the podium. Please state your name and address and be sure your comments with it. Second call for the tiny house development. Please step forward.
Mister. Hello, I'm Jamie Judisch, one three four three seven Sunset Bay Lane, northeast. And haven't had a chance, just found out that this was happening tonight and have not had a chance to review the ordinance, which is unfortunate, but want to do that here very quickly. But we are currently working with Olmsted County and the H R A. To help them establish areas for more affordable housing. So this is stuff that we are interested in. There's land nearby that has been identified as a potential site, and we would very much like to pursue more affordable housing, single-family detached options. The county said that they had a target price point of around two hundred fifty thousand a home. We think that may be possible with enough density. But still with good design, because the last thing we want are to create neighborhoods that depreciate over time. You know, we want it to be an asset that people take care of, that they're proud of, that appreciate with the rest of the market. So we already have some rough plans in place as to what that can look like. We have other developments in different parts of the country that our design team is a part of. So I I wish that I had a chance to see the ordinance. I'll go through it here quickly, but this is something that we're working on. We're excited that Orinoco is is open to it as well and look forward to finding out the Ts and Cs.
Any questions for the gentleman? I have one question. Well, please. So this land is in within the city limits? Will be. Oh, is this part of your property?
Yeah.
The trust?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Just to follow up on March time, this is land that Mark Kane owns. It's in a trust. It's. It's the southeast corner of Cedar Woodlands. Right now, it's not within the city limits, but potentially it's within our future land use plan map, so. Any other comments? Third and final call for the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at six thirty-six. And we will look at our agenda. There are several things that were added. I just want to make sure that. Everything included. One thing I do have a question is, Mark Kane, could you step to the podium real quick, please? So is there a quote? Man and the contractor meter in the packet?
Yes.
Is it in the packet?
Back by Public Works.
Okay, right. But it's not on our agenda, so I moved to put on the agenda under Public Works, item number four, which is Bob the Bug Man quote. Second. And number five is a contractor water meter. This is for a special water meter that can be used for monitoring water use for contractors for fire hydrants or private use. I'm gonna add that quote also. Your motion to accept both those items? Jim, second.
Second.
Right. Any comments? All those saying if I be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose? All right. Next one is our public forum. It's a three-minute time limit per person. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules, and no employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes because we recognize only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council to please step forward to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the form provided on the podium. So with that, if there's somebody who'd like to speak publicly for, please step forward.
Hi, Jan Tronson. Just a quick question. I've been to the meetings tonight. We talked about the wall there. I talked to the mayor earlier this week or last week. I don't remember. I think from the other. And he said that the plans, I think, isn't done yet. We talked about it running into full rush and everything else. And as it is now, it's we're getting towards the end of May. Plans aren't done. If it was up for bid, we're in the middle of June, July. We're in right in August again. So I guess I was just not understanding when you guys, we voted that you voted that in in March. It was kind of like, let's get it done. And it's a straight wall. I don't myself understand what, how much engineering has got to be done with a straight wall. When I talked to the wall company myself, twenty-five hundred dollars would have gotten me all the plans, everything else I needed to have structure built. So I guess I I see it on your agenda later tonight, but.
I'll speak to it later on in the agenda.
Yeah, I got it in another meeting, but I just, it's one of those things that I was hoping anyone run that, but it just appears to me now if it isn't up tonight for for you to okay, then that drags it down the road even further.
So that's all I have. Who else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Becca Greener, and I'm at five three five Zombrel Hills Drive Southwest, and I want to use this public forum time to talk about the speeds on Zombrel Hill Drive, Zombrel Hill Drive. I want to talk about how many cars use this road, how fast they drive, and how dangerous it is. So I live on this road, and I live with my husband and my two small children. I have a two-year-old and a ten-month-old. And if you don't know this road, it's the Development West of Chili's, and it's one of the main thoroughways to a lot of the homes in the development. Just on a quick walk, we counted a hundred and five homes serviced by Zombrel Hills Drive. So that's a lot of cars considering there are multiple drivers per household, and most people leave their house more than once a day. So every time they leave their house, it's people using that road. That's a lot of traffic. And another thing is a lot of these homes are really far back in, so they have a long ways to drive. And Zombrel Hills Drive is one of the first roads they go on for some of these homes further back in the development, and I it's understandable that these people just want to get home and they're driving fast, but still it leads to this dangerous situation. If you look at our street, we have lots of families with young children. On any given night, there are toddlers running around in yards and driveways, and also there aren't any sidewalks, so there's always people and throughout the neighborhood can be found biking, walking. With all this, with all this traffic, it can prove to be pretty dangerous because the bikers, the bikers, the walkers, and the young children don't really slow people down. As a mom, I always worry about my kids when we're outside with that busy road. My son is an avid biker. On any given day, you can find us out on the driveway. If you come in and drive by in the evening, you'll see us out there biking, and there's a good chance you'll, if you're driving slow, you'll also be tailgated by someone who's aggressively trying to get to their house. That's, in fact, that's happened to me several times. I'm slowing down to get my driveway, and somebody's tailgating me, honking, trying to get around because they're trying to get home, and I'm just trying to pull into my driveway safely. And I've also seen cars just whip past our road with no regard with the fact that there's a toddler biking on our driveway. I've had my son just beelining down the driveway, and cars don't even plunge, not even a brake, not even a hesitant that there's a toddler drives biking towards the road. It's scary. It's just the traffic on that road really, really isn't safe. I know with the new sewer project, there is a plan for developers to finally create a road out to Hundredth Street back in the neighborhood, which would provide an alternate route for a lot of people. With that, I want to ask that the city require this outlet for them, for those developers, especially if there's going to be any new houses or anything like that. Because I know it falls into their hands, and I'm just making sure, I'm asking the city to step in and make sure that this actually happens, that road actually gets put in. That outlet is crucial. But I'm also asking for something to be done sooner because it's scary. It's a scary situation. I know we've talked, I've talked to a few people about a few options, and I think there's some good options like speed limit, more speed limit signs, extra enforcements, or I really think speed bumps would be really, really helpful and really impactful because it would help people to actually physically slow down. Because I know that's what we need is people to be driving slower speeds, and we need it to happen now to help make that road a lot safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else like to speak at the public forum? Please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public forum before. We will continue with our agenda. So. Communicated with Sergeant Mark Chambers about attending our meeting tonight, the deputy sheriff, and I understand we have a representative here this evening, so.
Yeah.
Corporal Pagels.
You might come to the forum and. Get your name and.
Corporal Pagel. I'm filling in for Sergeant Chambers. I believe he wanted me to bring up the the speed issue. I believe the Zombrel Hills is what he was referencing, and I can't speak for every shift, people being out there. I know they try to get out there as much as they can. I know there was one deputy that was out there. I think he maybe spent an hour out there, and he had one person doing forty in a thirty. I I can't speak for the other times because I haven't been out there myself, but. Her suggestions, maybe getting a speed table put in would probably help. Obviously, extra enforcement as much as we can be out there to be visible, but obviously, we can't be out there all the time. But that, yeah, that was the one thing he wanted me to relay is that there was a deputy out there, and I don't know, I think he said from like seven to eight and then five to six, maybe were the were the timeframes. Yeah. And it's a little hard for us to get out there at at five thirty. That's our shift change. We do have other squads that kind of overlap day and night shift, so, you know, hopefully they cover calls when we're having our briefing, so they can't always be up there. So I don't know if that's something that the city wants to solicit a specific deputy to sit there. That would be up to you guys. That's another option, you know, once in a while to, obviously, would be overtime for the for the deputy that sits there, but that's just another option that we've done in other cities, but.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
We'll be talking about this later in the agenda, right?
It's on our agenda, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate your comments as well.
Yeah.
In the past, we've talked about our parks, having people roll, sheriffs, deputies go through the parks.
Yeah.
On your own shifts and just check for suspicious activity.
And and we do, yep. I mean, I know I can speak for myself, but I I know other deputies do too as they can.
Okay. All right. Anything else? And that's on our agenda. We'll talk a little more detail and discuss some discussions. So thank you.
Sure, okay.
Hey, Dan? You're Dan.
Dan's not here today.
Assistant chief.
I'm the assistant chief, so. Hi, everyone. We had two runs, grass fire and a pole shed fire mutual response with Pine Island Fire Department. Second item there, equipment fund, city staff's working on that. Number three, calibrating gas meter bill, accounts to fifty dollars, believe that's annual. And we have new applicant Bryce Christensen.
So. So you would like to motion for the gas meter purchase?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the quote for calibrating the gas meter.
Second.
Second. Lori? Or Dana? Dana.
Just raise my hand.
All right, any comments or discussion there?
And then the fourth item, the new applicant Bryce Christensen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose?
Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
All right, the new applicant Bryce Christensen. We did approve him at our fireman's meeting. So we would request that the city council accept Bryce Christensen as a firefighter.
Just the firefighter position.
So far, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the new applicant Bryce Christensen as a new firefighter. Second. Second, so. Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose? That's approved. All right, first responders?
I'm I'm up here. We had five runs in the city, ten in the township, and we have a new applicant, Tanya Driesman. She was accepted at our first responder meeting.
I make a motion to approve Tanya Driesman to the first responders.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any comments? Great. Can I see applicants for both firefighters and first responders coming forward over the last several months? That's good.
Yes, very good.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Approved?
I don't have anything for E O C.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, personnel. There's a speeding on Zombrel Hills Drive, and in your packet, you will see there are some emails that I received. One was from Becca, and also another one was from residents, both the husband and the wife that live across the street. On Zombrel Hills Drive, and I think that's. It is a valid concern, and I I. Appreciate Becca come forward and speaking at public forum as well. Did anybody else have any other comments other than or spoke to any of the residents?
Yes, I sat down and spoke to Becca, and then I also spoke to some people who live further up in that area that, you know, few families are traveling to and from, and. Because when I went over, so I took the, I took a day to kind of go over to that area, and I drove the road, and I actually saw Becca out in her yard and the little one on the driveway, just like she said they would be. And I tried driving thirty, and I couldn't. Because it's seemed way too fast in a neighborhood that is that packed with that many kids playing. And I don't know what it would take to decrease the speed limit to twenty-five, but I think that that would be also a really good solution for that area. It's just way too dense, densely populated to have a speed limit of thirty. And when I spoke to the family that lives up the up in the, at the very end, so they're on Istis Lane, so it's the very end, almost, I guess now there's a new addition, but. She said she has a new driver, teenage driver, his gas permit, and she has said to him, sorry, specific, but she has said you are not to go over twenty-two on that road. And she's like, not even letting me go twenty-five because she's just that concerned, and she said it, she's just very aware too that, and you know, she's like, yes, people are in a hurry and want to get home, but that's nothing compared to, you know, people's safety. So, I mean, so I have spoken to people that live up there and then also people that live at the bottom, and it seems like there's. Pretty, everybody is in pretty much agreement, or not everybody, but a lot of people are in agreement that people are driving too fast, they have to do something. So my thought was lower speed limit. There's only two signs on the whole road. That's not enough. What other notes did I take? There was the flags that were put up, those, but those have fallen down and behind like they're now in between the signs. You can't even see them anymore. So those are my thoughts, and yes, speed tables also. But I think. I think thirty is too high. That's just what I think.
I agree. We know some people up there. We've been up there, and it is hard to drive thirty, and in the the fact that there's really no place for people to walk, I know there's the grass. I I really don't think there's any place for people to walk. And I I do, I do think it's it's too fast, whether it's speed bumps or speed table or, you know, signs or or radar signs telling them how fast they're going. I think definitely need to do something.
So you're, I mean, we talked about, it's it's a combination of the, I hear what you're saying, it's a combination of the the number of people using the roads and just the speed itself, too.
Right. And then the fact people backing out of their driveways, you know, if you're driving that fast, I mean, someone could back out of their driveway quick, and. They're they're going to get hit if they're not watching.
Deputy, could I ask you come to the podium, please? Some of your thoughts about the twenty-five million dollars in that residential area?
Absolutely. We have other communities that have done the same thing. Unfortunately, it takes a lot of education, a lot of patience to get people, because as she said, and we all know, everybody's in a hurry. They don't care about what's going. But there has to be some accountability for everybody that's on that road and the people that are using it. So whether that means, again, at some point. You you get a speed sign put out there for a while so people pay attention to how fast they're going. Put extra patrol out there and start writing tickets to people. I mean, it it has to affect people, unfortunately, in a negative way before they start to realize that, geez, you know, I guess I don't need to do thirty through here. But you certainly, as a city, would have the right to do that, and I don't know if you want to do this, a speed study first. Some some places have done that. I I honestly don't know if it's a requirement to change it. It is, okay. So you'd have to, you know, find out how much traffic goes through there, that sort of thing, but. Anything, you know, I would maybe check with other cities, and it doesn't have to be local to find out what they've done in their neighborhoods to slow traffic down. Again, the speed tables, the things to get people's attention that, you know, you don't have to drive that fast.
Yeah, I think the speech, it sounds like it's a requirement from the attorney's comment there, so I think that's part of the rationale for justifying it and the background, so.
Yeah.
The commissioner of transportation has to allow you, you have to ask for permission to change that, and then.
Yeah.
You have to ask for that permission on the basis of the traffic study that you you get done. Then they then they'll.
And it takes time. I mean, it's it's not something that's going to happen, you know, in two weeks or whatever. It's something that. So I guess in the meantime, you know, as much, like I said, as much as the sheriff's office can get out there and slow people down or you guys, we do have a speed sign that we can put out.
Right, we've used it before. Sergeant Carmack, we used it on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Minnesota Avenue, we did a speed study, and that gave us some data, so.
Yeah.
It's portable. And for your information, we've, the city has applied for a State Farm Community Safety Grant for radar, sign, solar power.
Okay.
We're just kind of waiting for a response back from them to make sure the application is okay, and we sent some supporting information to justify our application, so.
Sure.
We're waiting for a response, so that's like a fifty-three hundred dollar grant towards two of these signs, so that can happen, but that's, it's exactly a good example for their.
Yeah.
Minnesota Avenue, so.
Yeah.
In the meantime, of, you know, we could post additional thirty speed, thirty million dollar speed signs.
Sure.
In a couple more areas, at least two more, I can say, but at the same time, I think the study would be, we contract with the sheriff to do that, Sheriff Department do that, the city say. The speed study.
Uh, no, uh, well, for our sign, yeah, you can, I can pass on that we want to put the sign up here, but otherwise, we don't do any like speed studies and what you'd be needing for.
Get the higher somebody to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the only thing we would do is. Yeah, the only thing we would do is bring up our speed sign and, and attach it to another sign, existing sign, and it just would show people, if they're paying attention, what their speed is, as they're coming up to the sign, and then it sends, whoever's, whoever's the administrator, like, there's three of us that, we would get an email, like, and unfortunately, we're not always in the area when that email comes in saying somebody just went through there at, say, forty-five miles an hour. You know, but it's just, it's another, hopefully, awareness thing that people pay attention to how fast, it's, it's a visible thing, you know, because a lot of people honestly don't pay attention, we know that, how fast they're going.
Is that something that we can do now, like, can we make that decision to do that now, so that we can at least start this process?
Right, I think so.
Okay.
I think that would be. So we contact Sergeant Chambers then, if we want to do this, use your, if the sign
Yeah, I can, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll set that up with whoever's, because we try to rotate the sign around different areas, so I honestly don't know who has it right now.
Is there a way, you know, when people, if it picks up that someone is speeding, are there signs that, that would possibly have cameras that could take a snapshot?
There might, I think there are, but ours does not.
Okay.
Ours just notifies us, ours will let us know, like, you know, heavy traffic times, when, okay, from I'll just say six-thirty to seven, there was X amount of people that were doing this speed or whatever, so you can kind of determine when heavy traffic is and what people are doing, but no, we don't, ours does not have a camera.
I know, we were having that on West Center, and just the officers, you know, making a presence at certain times.
Right.
It helped.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That was a, that was a freeway through there, it seemed like.
Yeah.
Are there any additional places we could put stop signs in, or yield signs, anything like that? To just get people to stop?
Well, they have to be placed in the correct places, I mean, they can't just
I wouldn't think you'd be able to put a stop sign just to have a stop sign.
No.
On a general, on an intersection, of course, but
Right, but there aren't any, I mean, some of our streets just don't have any
I don't think that that's the case over there, I didn't notice that, well, whoever lives over there can, yeah, I don't think that that's the case, I think all the stop signs are right, at least, I think people are in just a habit of rushing home, and it's just that we need to, like, make them aware, and I seriously, sometimes, I mean, if we really thought, told people, hey, you know, there's children, and if we really, like, put it out there.
Well, that was my other question, is if, like, and again, it's, it's whether or not people want to pay attention to it, whether they want to actually be accountable for their actions, if you put it out on your website saying, hey, pay attention to what you're doing, you know, the speed limit's thirty, you're in a residential area that is heavily used by walkers, kids, you know, et cetera, be mindful of your speed and, and what you're doing, just, you know. Unfortunately, that's the world that we live in, we have to remind people of those things, and
And there's the homeowners association.
I was just gonna ask that, is
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna ask that with the, the neighborhood, is there an association that you could do an outreach for, through the neighborhood, and just connect with people saying, this is a huge concern of ours, this is what we're seeing, and just people don't think, and if you don't have little kids or new drivers, maybe you need a reminder that this is what's going on on these streets, and
Because people aren't going to, generally, it's just human natural, in nature, and, and it's obvious, I mean, we see it every day with speeders. They're not gonna change their, their habits and their pattern until it affects them negatively, you know, one way or another. So, unfortunately, that means everybody else has to work harder. And, you know.
The other thought I had too is, and this is something, you know, we have a two-year contract for so many hours a day.
Correct.
And we could amend our contract if that's what the council decides, and, and allow budget to increase the number of hours. We're talking about increasing the hours during those critical times, I don't know how that works with your
Yeah, yeah, and that, yeah, that, I'm not sure how the, the sheriff would handle that, it, most likely in these situations, it comes in as an extra patrol request for specific times, specific areas, and unfortunately, we get to it as much as we can with the other things that are going on. That's why I suggested, is, you know, there's been other cities, townships, whatever, that have, and I'm not saying that you guys, I want you guys to, to pay for extra deputies, but that's oftentimes how it can, it'll get handled, because that's all that person does, for a specific period of time, however, what, how many days, how many hours, whatever it is, that will be all that person does, they don't respond to calls, they don't, they don't do anything else, that is their specific duty for that time, timeframe for
Kind of like our gold rush, how we use
Yeah.
So is, is there any chance to get a safe and sober deputy to come up?
We don't have safe and sober anymore, unfortunately. I mean, we have, we have shifts that they sign up for, but then that's, that's already set by the state, and we have to follow their guidelines of what they're asking us to do for that shift.
Right, isn't that some of that speeding enforcement, isn't that one of the two focuses of
Yeah, and if, I'd have to check on that to, to verify for sure if they're okay, that they would deviate from, because they, they, they have specific areas that we have to cover
Oh, I see.
During those, so we'd have, I'd have to find out if they would be okay if we deviated from
The location.
Because they do, they do specific hours, and then specific roadways.
See, I knew it was hours, I thought you could go to any roadway.
No, not, not generally, no.
Good, thanks for your comments, good suggestions, I think, I, I agree with you, you gotta change that attitude, and
Correct.
The only way to do that is
And it's not
Unfortunately, you have tickets.
Correct, and it's not gonna happen overnight, unfortunately, but, you know.
But we can educate
The more, yes.
This is the pop, this is what we're considering, possibly looking at, and at least get some attention to the we could lower the speed signs.
Yep, absolutely, and there's been other, like I said, there's been other residential areas that have done the same, granted, people don't like it, but you gotta, they gotta look out for people's safety, that's number one, and I guess
If we put up one of those speed monitoring solutions, you mentioned you receive data.
Yeah.
Is that something we would have access to?
Um, I think so, if you guys requested it, I, I think somehow it could be printed off or whatever.
Sergeant Carmack provided us a data, bar chart, time, number of people driving the speed limit, over the speed limit.
Was that good enough?
Way over the speed limit.
Is that good enough for the speed study? That's not enough?
That has to be an official
With the cord across the road, or something.
Yes, yeah, okay, and I, that's done through the state, I believe, you have to
Yeah, I've never actually, people have asked that question, and that's the answer, I've never been involved with getting a study, but I think you can either hire
Add them.
Yeah, you hire a company to do it.
Yeah.
We've done it before, right?
Right, on Minnesota
Yeah, our, our sign would just, would just give you a, a good indication of, of what's happening.
For like, a week or five days, something like that.
Yeah.
Very short time, but, yeah.
Right, yeah, I think most of the time we've usually done it for like a week, and
Because it is used by a lot of people, so. Right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Right, and may I add one quick question, or solution, may I? We have the monitors, and in Florida, and I think you can get them here too, but when you're going by, it will flash the red lights, like you're getting picked up, and it does take your picture, and it does send you a ticket. They're out there, so you can check into that, it's a box, just like you're talking about, and when you're coming up onto it, it will actually give you the lights.
Kind of like what they have at toll booths and stuff, when you go
Yep, but Florida's got, Fort Myers Beach has got them, and I tell you what, they work, because once you get a ticket in the mail.
Thank you.
They slow up.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how those, how they would
Have a minute?
Have a minute for our
Right.
Our area, you know, with our Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, I guess I'll make a motion that we proceed with asking the all-state county if we could borrow their speed study equipment, and come back to the council. And we'll let the council know, I guess, but I guess that would be my first proposal, and then I would also make a motion that we the attorney look together, a process of what would take to lower the speed limit, not that we're gonna do, but I think we need to document in our minutes that what we're gonna do, at the same time, send letters out to the HOAs of the concern, and the steps the city's taking.
Could we research a speed table as well?
We could, sure. You want to make that part of the motion too?
I may amend.
I may amend to research
Okay.
Speed table options.
It's a speed table, I guess I don't
So instead of a bump, it's just a longer
Wider.
Wider, so
It's not as aggressive.
Yes, yeah.
I guess it's a good word for it.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's, um I use them, I know they have them on different places in Rochester.
Yeah, I think Bailey Hills has them.
Yeah, and over by Fifty-Fifth Street, but northern
So is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Jim, okay, so the motion is to contact the city for the sheriff, or borrow their equipment for a speed study on Zumper Hills Drive.
Speed sign. Speed sign, not study.
I'm sorry, speed sign, yes, and also have the attorney look at the process for lowering the speed limit to twenty-five, and also investigate, have Joe, city engineer, come back with some ideas about speed bumps, estimates. Speed tables, I should say.
Got it.
All right, all those in favor, any other discussion or comments? I think we have good alternatives here, and I think we'll just see where it takes us, so.
I would suggest too, like, if you do get it approved, just change the signs to, to the lower speed limit, that you make it well-known that you've done that, and then I would still ask for extra patrol for a while to enforce it. Because people will
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you, all right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Good, thank you. Next item is our bank reconciliation with Smith and Schaefer, who is our current auditor. We used them for the last couple of years, are finishing up the twenty-twenty audit, and that will be presented at the June meeting, is the plan right now. So they helped us through twenty-twenty, and a lot of our bank reconciliation with a lot of the transition of personnel, and getting caught up in everything, and we recognize that they do provide a a good service, and, and still, we'd like to consider doing that for twenty-twenty-one, so I asked for a proposal, it's in your packet. They've done a lot of things with, with Geraldine, as far as us doing a better job of getting, getting the work ready for them, or the detail ready for them. In the previous reconciliation, so they're looking at a quote for a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for staff work, supervisor work if that's necessary, and this is probably a two to three hour process per month, is what they're estimating. And that's the number they gave us back, I think it was a hundred and fifteen back in August, but it was that same two to three hours per month. And this also makes for better audits, from the standpoint of not having to, it may give us a better break on our cost for doing an audit, because they're familiar with their bank reconciliations and have all that information going forward, leading up to the point where they do the audits, so.
Is it two to three hours every month?
Per month, right.
And are you only billed for what you're, what they work, not?
Right.
Okay.
That's what they use, you know. I make a motion that we approve the Smith and Schaefer proposal to do bank reconciliation for the city for twenty-twenty-one calendar year, at a hundred and twenty dollars per hour for staff work, and any supervisor work at a hundred and sixty dollars per hour. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Rylan, what, what the supervisor would have to do, or when, when they would bring a supervisor on?
That's a good question. I, by them saying any supervisor, it sounds like it's a free staff function, but
Yeah.
I guess we'll just kind of play that by ear and ask them to minimize or the amount of supervisor work, or that staff person is trained enough not to have to request, or need a supervisor work, I guess. All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. That's approved. Or Uncle Lions Club has a temporary Gold Rush liquor license for Gold Rush. Anyone make a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the application for Lions Club temporary Gold Rush liquor license.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Lori, or Lizzie? Any comments? They'll be located for Gold Rush up on the concrete pad, also down First Street Southwest, or second, First Street, where they have been in the past. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That's approved. The next item is a special gathering permit for a residence, A sixty-five Forest Lane Southwest. Renee and I have been talking with, when I was filling in, to the people that were organizing it, and they filled out a form, because they anticipate over a hundred people, they've talked to the neighbors about the event, looking forward to have some music, band, background music, is my impression is what I got from talking to the gentleman. I think one of the key things is that the timeframe is from five to eleven, four, five to eleven P M. And they have talked to the neighbors. Those are fairly big lots over by, right directly behind Tilly's Restaurant on the west side, so. Any other comments, if not, I'll make a motion that we approve the special gathering permit for A sixty-five Forest Lane Southwest. Any other comments? Now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item is our ordinance and resolutions, these are voice votes. First one is twenty-twenty-one dash oh four. For the tiny house developments. As a conditional use in R two zone. So, somebody want to make a motion for any discussion?
I will move to approve ordinance, is it approved, is that the right verbiage? Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero three.
Zero four.
Zero four. Zero four. Nope, yep, wait, nope, nope.
Is there a second?
Nope, isn't the wrong, I, we don't have that.
It's right, zero five.
Zero four.
Zero four. Up here?
I get zero.
Oh my gosh.
I know we have to change one.
Zero four.
The one that I have in my hands that says tiny house development says zero four.
Should be in the packet of this.
It might come online, I read it all today.
Is this the current and, and true?
We haven't changed the language in a month at least, two months probably, so it's just a matter
See, I can
It's just a matter of labeling it correctly, so I think what you should do is just adopt it as zero four, or just make a note of this, so if it's not right, change it to zero four, and don't adopt two zero fours, so the next one should be zero five, zero six.
And then you'll check in the book, you need to compare it with the book.
Okay, so my, my motion is to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero four, for the tiny house ordinance.
Is there a second? I'll second it. So comments, discussions? I did ask Paul to be here, so. Just basically because Jim and Dana have only been on the council this, it's only been since January, but he's responded. He's, I know he works a lot of hours, but. I know. Mike has spent a lot of time on it and redid it as well, so.
Probably did ten or fifteen drafts of this. So, feel like very nitty gritty. And I, you know, I can't really add much to it. It's just, it's more of a policy choice and there was a lot of discussion about the very specific language, you know. About the number of feet for things and the number of. I don't know how else to say it. The details, the details were heavily discussed.
I had a note.
I am. Maybe, because I think of just a couple of things. The tiny house is measures at least a hundred and twenty square feet of main living space. And does not exceed four hundred square feet of living space. Which would exclude any level of square foot on the second level as well. So I think that's one key. The other one is a. This one, these homes would be a manufactured home. For the purpose of this section, manufactured home means a structured, transportable, and one or more sections which is built on a permanent chassis is located on a permanent foundation. So. Mike, from your standpoint, when we speak of a tiny house. That was the definition. This was the definition for a manufactured home, I should say.
Right.
So manufactured home is on a permanent foundation versus a.
Yeah, I think tiny house is also on a permanent foundation. I think with the idea that is. They wanted to have every, all of the residential units on permanent foundations. And since manufacturer homes sometimes are not put on permanent foundations, you know, in other places. That was included in the definition to just make it clear that if, if the tiny house that you're constructing is a manufactured house, it has to be on a foundation. That makes sense.
Right, okay.
And it's not more.
I think they did a good job with utilities, one permitted driveway, a storm shelter. At least. They also are. For had to have a tiny house development, it has to be a, as listed, conditional use for C U P and R two zoning.
Right. It's only in that one zoning. And this is all from planning and zoning. I mean, they decided this, so Paul should really speak to it, not me, but that's correct. It's gotta be that. And then it's gotta be a planned unit development. To get, that's another process in the city code. Yeah, so. And then there was, you know, one other thing I thought that was discussed a lot. I don't know if it's important or not, but it was the parking requirements. That, you know, we did multiple drafts of the parking requirements in this. So, and my role isn't to really advocate for what it should be, but it was more, I mean, Paul should speak to why they did it that way. People have got ordinances from. Multiple different cities in Minnesota and outside of Minnesota. And they're all, they vary a lot in this specific requirements, so. This is what they, they decided here at the planning and zoning.
So. As we look at the tiny house developments and they give the definitions for homeowners, tiny house. Manufactured home, modular homes, prefabricated buildings. What am I missing then when I look at the chart on the third page? And it just talks about the lot area just for tiny houses. So like a tiny house is fifty-five hundred square feet and then all the different dimensions to fit on the lot.
Right. So I think what, what you're missing is by definition of a tiny house. Excuse me, a manufactured home or modular home is a tiny house. They're just a different type of tiny house with different requirements.
But they can't be over four hundred square feet?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Or they can't be reaching.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Can you, Jim, or Mike speak to with the. When it talks about the natural landscaping, what, it said the entire lot should be covered by grass or natural landscaping. Consistent with, what is that other option? There's a natural landscaping option. Oh, sorry, E, E two. So it's actually right under that lot, under that chart that. Rylan was just referring to.
Yeah, so I think, I think what that means is you can't pave your entire lot. Right. So if you look at the first sentence, it says except for the areas used for patio sidewalk or hard service off street parking. So you can have pavement for that, but then they didn't want a developer to be able to just pave the entire thing and then have no grass at all. Right, pavement or gravel. Because keep in mind, they're small lots too. So they want it to look normal, like a neighborhood or something.
Okay. I found a typo too, Mike.
Uh-oh, which one?
Instead of, instead of. On D, it says tis instead of its.
Oh boy.
I know, big deal.
So D on the previous page?
Number one.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it, but. Well, we, we can, we can just change that if you adopt it anyway.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I was wondering.
Point it out to Geraldine, no, because I don't see it.
No, I don't see it now either. She has something in her brain.
It's D two.
D two.
What'd you find out?
Oh yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I, I would like to just comment, this has, the, the planning and zoning committee has been working on this for well over two years. And I, I think it's incredible and it's a great project to have. On paper and into ordinance, so I'm very thankful for the group that worked on it.
I know they had representatives from the Tiny House Association providing input and back, really, first started back a year and a half ago, so. There was some interest. I haven't heard anything personally lately, but there was some. Genuine interest. I think there will be just kind of the right developer and wants to do this, so. Any other comments? I, I agree with Laurie. They've spent a lot of work on it. It's gone through multiple iterations that Mike is. Keenly aware of, but I think it ended up being a better document now, so.
One thing I'll bring up too, that we were specific about, and I don't know which one it is in. I thought we, we talked about leasing it.
Well, we require a homeowners association. That's what I remember. That may really, I don't remember that.
We were talking about either they couldn't lease it out or rent it out.
Anyway. Like, you know, I don't remember that. Do they have to be owner occupied, what you're saying? Yeah, I don't recall.
Sorry. We're glad it's been addressed. So is that something we need to consider or?
No, I mean, we, we had talked about it and I thought we had put it. So yeah, I don't recall that. Yeah, I said I look at the homeowners association. D, paragraph D.
Not to check maybe we even.
And.
And.
Yeah.
Because I know originally, originally it was. There and I, I know we talked, some of us talked against it.
Yeah, so the, you know. So this is kind of one of the unique things, I think, is that D four, where it says the title to all residential property owners. Shall include an undivided fee simple estate in the common open spaces not dedicated to the public, so. You know, you know, when you do a plat, for example, the streets, if a developer builds a street that's dedicated to the public on the plat. So then the, the public owns a easement over the street for Robert right away. So other than those areas, any common areas that are included. You know, to get approval of the planning unit development, you have to have those be common areas. Owned by the association. And then it also requires an association which helps regulate, that has specific requirements for the association. That was common to a lot of the sample ordinances we saw is that way they can. You know, you have to have an association, you have to file that document with the state. And you've got to comply with the things, the association has to include documents that comply with these things. So, anyway, that was. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we covered in number one.
All right, seeing all the comments. All those in favor of the tiny home ordinance, signify by, it's a voice vote. So I'll, I voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 It's approved, oh, zero. Next item is our. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh three, which is the rezoning of S D Venture Parshals from B two to M one. And. There was a public hearing at P and Z and in your packet should be a. There should be a ordinance with, has three sections, section one, section two, and section three. Does everybody have that ordinance? Section one, two, and three, and twenty-one, twenty twenty dash, twenty twenty-one dash oh three. So the. The section one, just to read that real quickly, this is the ordinance to amend the zoning map. City of Ornocco, it's section one, that on the recommendation of the Order for Planning Commission, that following the square building state of two partial IDs be reapproved to rezon properties. And property needs to be spelled without a Y, editorial there. From B two to M one, light manufacturing. Lot one, lot, lot two, block one. Section two is the official zoning map, city of Ornocco set forth by the authority of, shall be amended accordingly. And section three, the publication of this ordinance is expressly, expressly condition on the applicant's S D Ventures to enter a cost security agreement with the city of Ornocco. So those are the three. Sections that we want to include in the ordinance. So I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three.
Second.
Any comments?
I, I'm struggling with this one. I, I feel like. I don't understand why we're changing the zoning, number one. I feel like it kind of slipped in with having the public hearing at. The planning and zoning meeting. And then when we talked about it at the last meeting. There was really no information given. And I feel like the public, specifically the neighborhood around the area. Is going to be taken aback by the fact that we're changing the zoning on this. I, I don't feel like, I, I feel like we're not doing the city and the citizens justice by moving forward with changing the zone. To put a, to, to put a storage lot there. And I, I feel like if my home was next to or across from this, I would be unhappy. And I don't, I don't feel like our, I don't feel like our neighbors really understand or know what's going on with it. So.
I had a chance to, have you ever, have you gone to the lot or talked to?
I, I haven't, but I've, I mean, I know exactly where it is.
So I had a chance to go there and meet with him and he showed me a book and pictures and everything. And I was put at ease with all those questions. I know he's talked to the people to the north of him for sure, to know that this is what's happening. So then they've been like, okay, and answer questions. And then talking about too, what plans for that before he bought it was to store firm equipment. So that was the original plans use for that lot.
Which is, which is a two-highway business and it's. It's not changing it because we changed it to high, to M one light manufacturing today. And then our water and sewer project goes through. And now we have opened ourselves up to a. Flat paved lot that we now have open for anything that fits into M one.
Okay, to address that, there's a couple of things. One is, there's the two, this is a two-step process. One is to rezon it. And then our agenda is to talk about, I think it's the next item, is the conditional use permit of how it can be used. And within the conditional use permit, there are. Language, if you will, and Mike can speak to it as well, but there are conditions being put into it. With the conditional use permit application being part of the exhibit of how it can be used. There's also in the exhibit, it offers about the green belts with the trees and. Everything to. Meet that. Space between the M one and the residential areas. So. And those are two concerns. Those are valid concerns, but that's what we put here into the C U P to ensure. To the best of the city abilities that it remains a. An outdoor storage area and can't be changed to a something different. I also spoke with the owner. And shared the insights of the, the six, the six final fence and all the shrubs and the computer controlled gates and. I mean, it is a serious commitment to keep it, or to make it an outdoor storage area. And I feel that's. You know, it could be just open space too, but it's not. So he's investing his time and money to make it a. State-of-the-art facility, if you will, but it, and with the stipulations, and if I miss speaking here, misspoke, Mike, please interject, but I just feel like it's really. Keeping it an outdoor storage area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, I, I think the planning and zoning came up with these conditions. I did not come up with them. They, they put the conditions in. I just drafted the template agreement and told them they had to make factual findings and add whatever conditions they thought were appropriate. I think once you, you know, this is what's important to remember about conditional use permits is just taking a step back and looking at what it is. It's a, it's a property interest. I mean, you're conveying a property interest onto these people. This will be recorded with the county recorder's office. And it'll run with the land forever. So any subsequent, I think what Laurie's saying is what if somebody buys it, what if he does what he's saying he's gonna do, but then. Sells it in seven years. And then the next person who owns it wants to do something else that's more. Maybe not as passive, like cars sitting there, but more active manufacturing was to stop them. Well, I think at that point, because you rezoned it, it's now zone M one. They can do anything that's permitted or conditional on M one. However, they will have to always comply with these conditions. So in other words, the conditions, they'll always have to have a black fence, at least six feet in height. Wrecked it around the perimeter. They'll have to forever have the installation of downward facing lighting. You know, similar to what's on the, the attached application. And follow all of their city code requirements. Landscaping has to meet the green belt requirements and not conduct business between eleven P M and six A M, which is actually a code provision, but the way it's written in this. Even if you were to amend the code to take that out, that would be forever run with the land. So if a subsequent owner can operate a different M one business and still comply with these things, they can do that. So it's, this does not limit it to be a storage unit forever.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And, and so that was my main objection. The first time this came up was, well, wait a minute, you know, you're rezoning it. You know, it could be anything at that point. So, and I, you know, I didn't. You know, it really isn't my role as the attorney to tell you what the conditions should be. I mean, plant, planning and zoning did those. I just drafted the ordinance. I did doctor these up to use better language from what they put, I thought, more enforceable. I did doctor these up to use better language from what they put, I thought, more enforceable language. So I can't really, it's more planning and zoning.
You're right, you're right, Mike, I apologize. I spoke there, I think what I meant to say was, you took what the P and Z gave you and you put it into the document with exhibit A and exhibit B and and the stipulation, so. The five, the five conditions are in the planning zoning meeting minutes, it's just a matter of reapproving it for more enforcement, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have to ask yourself, are those conditions going to be sufficient to mitigate the new, any potential losses for future M one businesses?
Well, and the the other piece of this is that we have, for the last two years, two plus years that I've been in council, we have gone against every single spot zoning application that has come across our desk. And now we're doing it. Why? We, planning and zoning takes a lot of time and energy to put these maps together. And then we go in and just say, okay, let's change it. And it's done purposefully. And so I feel like when we go and do these things, then what's to say that the next person coming along wants to do heavy manufacturing? Well, they're, they're going to go right next to light manufacturing. Well, that fits. And now we've changed the landscape of our city because we've spot zoned one piece of property. I I just don't, I don't think it's smart. And it's nothing against your business, and I'm not saying, no, anything about that. It's that it goes against what we have been standing for and the time that we've taken to plan the lines of the city.
So why did the planning and zoning think that this was a, you know what I mean? If they're the ones taking the time and they're the ones recommending it.
I don't know if, I I don't know.
Part of the reason is the precedent that was set from the storage, storage right beside them.
Right.
Right.
Which is off, that was.
And that's, and that's my thought, that this just fits because we have a garage door company up the hill. We've got storage behind, what else are we gonna?
Right, it's kind of industrial car.
Right. I mean, it's not technic, you know, it, and and that, so in my mind, why wouldn't we allow someone who I, who I I know does really strong work in the community in Rochester, does, has really nice businesses, lives here, isn't, you know, because part of my issue is like the people that owned it before, they weren't even local. So they couldn't keep an eye on it. I mean, and this is not, I'm not planning and zoning, so I had nothing to go into the decision, but this is just me like, you know, speaking with him and thinking, it fits. And I don't know how the city has done the spot zoning in the past. And and I agree, like once the precedents are said, it's really hard to go against them. But also at some point, you have to start making things make sense.
Well, it's
I don't know.
The spot zoning has been a concern. There was a precedent set with the M one. I look at the property as being, it's on a very busy street, Minnesota Avenue. It's not a real criteria, but the point is that there's very little traffic going into this, whether it's Orinoco self storage or this proposed outdoor storage, there's going to be very little daily traffic. It's something you bring in, you park, you come back and a week later, two weeks later, so the traffic is really going to be light. And I think it's, it's a good use, there's wetlands around it. Half the lot is wetland, it's not usable anymore.
Right.
So there's, to me, like, it's, I think it's a good use of the land. It was, it's a B two. So, yeah, we could have put businesses if that's what was supporting, but right now the traffic count probably doesn't support a business of B two type business.
We're not going to get a business in there right now because we don't have sewer.
Right.
So I I mean, it's kind of neither here nor there. No business is going to go in, but we're also shooting ourselves from having that opportunity in the future to have business go in because we're going to rezone it.
So did we rezone the store, is the storage behind it, did that need to be rezoned?
It's M one now.
But so you usually don't have.
Outside, Orinoco cell storage behind it was.
It was already, it was always M one.
It was B two and has rezoned M one, I think.
This whole area has already been seen again, and it just kind of, I don't know. And the Thompson garage stores right there.
No, no, I take that back, it must have been. It was sold to a, the original owners, it was residential, and the original owner put up the two first sheds for storage. That was behind the house, next to the highway.
Yeah.
He sold the property and Mr. Craven came in and added to, to the building.
Right, he added on to what was already there.
Right.
And I mean, I'm, I agree with what Dana is saying. I mean, it just, that business made sense there. And in what they're going to do with the property and and how they're going to handle the wetlands and the drainage and everything. We've, we looked at it as something that just made sense. And it's also, it's, it's bringing in tax revenue for the community. I mean, it's bringing another business in town. Not that that should be our, our, you know, what we bank on, but it, all in all, it just, I think it makes sense for that lot. And, you know, the residents around did have, have their say, I mean, Trish was here. I forget the other residents that were just right beside it. I I I think it makes sense.
I do understand though, but the concerns about the, and and I don't know if we're comparing this spot zoning. I don't, I hope we're not comparing it to the cold storage.
No.
I hope that's not what we're talking about, because that's.
I mean, if you look at the traffic.
But it's, it's, I mean, it's a similar situation. You've got a house right across the street from it. And it, there's nothing to say that any other M one business can go into this space, even next week, if you zone it, it's up for grabs.
Is there anything that we can change or add to this conditional use permit that would make us, you feel better about it?
You can add conditions, and this is just, I think, the way it works in Orinoco. I haven't looked at your code, but I think it's a recommendation. The planning commission makes a, for the CUP at least, there's two separate things you'd have to approve. Have to approve the rezone, because if it's not rezoned, there is no conditional use. And that's, that has to be done by council, that's an ordinance, but the the CUP is a, you know, that's a council decision. So these are more or less recommendations. And this is what they put forward. So if you want to draft, you know, some sort of use restriction, that it has to be used as a parking lot pursuant to the attached plans, you could do that. You know, it's, it's, you know, it's difficult for me to go on and tell people to do that, because I don't know that's what their intent was or your intent is, you know.
We're not serving this land with water and sewer.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
We're going right by it. So water's already right in front of it and sewer is going, we are providing a sewer service to it or we can.
They won't be required to hook up if they don't need it. Right.
I mean, and the other thing, it's not right in the middle of a residential neighborhood or anything like that.
Yeah, the spot zoning, I, I, it's spot zoning within the business district, and we do have the road. Our code stipulates the road is, that's a barrier, that's a greenbelt, you know, compared to the trees and, you know, and we look at, just looking at the Minnesota Avenue, the whole avenue itself is all lined with businesses come across here or even either through here, so. See the spot zoning, but because we are, that's why we have the greenbelt and from what he explained to us.
So, Ryland, where on that map is our M one?
We're like, these three lots right here.
Yep, what, what color is M one on the?
It's purple. It's this, this is M one, these are M one, M one. Rest, these are all just B ones and B twos. Here's a B two. And this is a and this is R two here, and this is P two here, it's all commercial.
What makes a storage lot M one?
Whatever's in your code. You decide that, the city decides that. So another way to go about this would have been to, to just amend its currently, what is it currently?
Open storage is a necessary, is a conditional use for M one.
Right, you could have amended your code to add a conditional use to B two for surface lot storage or vehicle storage. That would have been, but keep in mind, we didn't, they applied for this. I mean, they submitted an application, that starts the process, you know. But you could always do that, you could have done that. As another way to, but then, of course, you have the opposite problem. So then you, you've added a new conditional use to B two, which applies to every B two district in the city. So you might think it's okay to have a storage unit at this B two location, but then there might be another B two location across town. And this, if you would amend the code to add a conditional use, then it applies over there too. You might not like it there. So has the city reviewed how this affects the con plant, this rezoning? Has anybody looked at that?
I have not looked at it personally lately, but I think
Can you say?
I think it does.
Affect the what?
I'm sorry, I'm taking my mask off. Uh, comp, the comprehensive plan. So like, sometimes you look at that, I mean, I think it's, you should be a little careful using the phrase spot zoning. I mean, that's a legal concept of art, I think, that, you know, just a rezoning isn't automatically, it's just spot zoning. I think spot zoning is quintessentially when it's, you know, an entire district. And then right in the center of the district, you're going to zone it different. Now, that's not the only way it can be spot zoning, this could be spot zoning, it might not be, I haven't thought about that, but it's when the surrounding, you know, the surrounding neighborhood, the characteristics, characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood are such that the zoning is illogical, essentially, that's not the exact legal standard, but.
And I certainly don't feel that way with this area. There's only two residents.
Right.
That are even remotely adjacent. And I just, from, I don't know if we would ever get a developer or a person, an owner, that would be so thorough and thoughtful and careful about the planning, the use of this property. That's my, that's how I feel after speaking with them and just knowing the property that he owns in Rochester and knowing people who who lease over him in Rochester and just speak very highly of him. So it'd be, I think it would be, I think it would be a shame to pass on a business owner like, like him.
I, I
And we did consider.
I had my visions of how it would look, you know, whenever talking with him, it was a commitment to make it to make it as nice as it's going to be. And and I think once it's all done, trees are full grown, the evergreens and a lot of downward lighting, I think it's going to be a the, the entrance to the lot is off of the current driveway that goes back to Orinoco self storage. So there's no additional, there is a secondary access that's closed, but it's not meant to be a public access of the the access to Minnesota Avenue, I don't think it's an issue at all, so. I'm sorry.
And we did consider the comprehensive land use plan when we were looking at all this as well.
I want to say it's pretty much lines along Minnesota Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah.
What did you, what was the discussion with the comprehensive use plan with the?
What's that?
What was the discussion that you had when you come agreeing with the context against the comprehensive use?
Yeah, we just looked, we looked at the fact that there's already businesses out there. And, you know, what, what would you really put right in the middle? And the fact of what, what they presented and how they're going to put it together. You know, the wetlands was a big thing. Yeah, I mean, we just figured it fit. Looking at, at the plan, looking at traffic, you know, because we discussed traffic and, and to me, it just fit, and I think we all, obviously, we all agreed.
Do you think that the, if we look at how the sewer and the water could have an impact on the city in a, you know, ten years' time? I guess one of the things I'm conflicted about similar to you, it sounds like, is the site, is the, you know, having the business here now would be, is wonderful. And but looking at what we want this city to be in ten years and the businesses we want to support, you know, that's prime real estate for our downtown district. And so, you know, when you look at the potential from a comprehensive use plan, you know, I wonder if there's any comment from the committee on that con. Anyway, I don't know if that's so much a question as a comment.
Well, I think that's where I, I get torn, because I, I see where you're all coming from with it, and I see how it fits today. But what are all the businesses that could go in there in an M one? When they're, they've outgrown the space, let's say. Let's say that they are, have the great, this great business and they decide to sell and move on. And now they have a very, very sellable lot that is ready to go, to have a building built on. Very inexpensive to put something on that because they've just got a flat lot. And and what do, what do we see then long term?
Well, that's why I'm wondering, do we make? Is there a way to make this conditional use permit?
Well, if you want to condition the rezoning, you have to condition the rezoning, not the conditional use permit. So you have to conditionally rezone the property conditional on using the property pursuant to the conditional use permit in twenty twenty one dash twelve. And so then the rezoning would be rescinded if they didn't do that. So that you could do that. You know, usually I would want to type that up and put that language in the ordinance before you adopt it, but you can't, I mean, you have, you can't add that condition to the permit. Hope you see that, because once you rezone it, and that's a, that's a legislative decision, you change the zoning map. And then you can put all these conditions in, in here, but a condition that, you know, this is a conditional use permit to use the property as a self storage lot. If you put a condition in the conditional use, use permit that they continue to use the property as a self storage lot, that's kind of self defeating. Of course, they have to do that, or they don't, they wouldn't need the permit if they were using it that way.
Right, so if we put language in the ordinance, that's that the.
So we talk about the what could happen with the lot, and nothing could happen with the lot. I also look at this as, here's a developer that's well known in the Rochester area. He's coming out to Orinoco, he's bought land here in Orinoco, he's investing in Orinoco. And I see there's potential for this developer to do some other development in Orinoco. You mentioned he has really nice properties in Rochester. And we know that Rochester property values are going up. We're coming out with sewer and water, and we're in a position where we're going to be more attractive because we, we're getting those comments from developers, when your sewer and water, once it's going to be done. So here's a way to show a developer in Rochester, that the city council is willing to work with them. We're working with our zoning maps and our comprehensive plans. And I think this is, you know, people can, I'm just no offense, but people can call it spot zoning, but at the same time, we have a process, it was rezoned, we had a public hearing. The developer is doing everything we're asking him to, and I think it would be be an incorrect decision, I guess, on my part, I see to vote this down. I just feel like it's a very strong indicator of somebody else from outside Orinoco that wants to work with Rochester.
But I think to, to your point, a developer coming in and wanting to work and buy property in Orinoco, why buy a property that zoned in the, in in the wrong zoning from what you want your business to be in? So I, I mean, I think there's two sides to it. I mean, there, there will be, when sewer comes through, developers that want to come in and use this property for what it's currently zoned for.
Possibly, I mean, it's a situation with the, so half the prop, or good section of the property cannot be touched because it's technically wetlands. So then you own property that you can't even develop. So you've got to, you know, are there people who are willing to do all this work? And they have to put in extra drainage work and tile and everything because of these wetlands. So I don't know if we, I don't know if that is going to be a piece of property that developers are going to, are going to jump on and do the right thing with. That's one thing that kind of struck me, there was a lot of, it wasn't just regular land, you know, it wasn't just so simple. That's one thing that kind of struck me, there was a lot of, it wasn't just regular land, you know, it wasn't just a simple lot. That was one thing that kind of struck me about this. The, the work that he's willing to do to make this work.
So I guess I would ask, Mike, can you repeat what you said earlier? Because. I don't feel we should kick this down the road again.
Yeah, so I think we need to get this done. So if you want to prove it conditionally, you could just prove it. And add with an amendment to add a section four that would state the property is rezoned on the express condition that the property be used. As a vehicle storage lot pursuant to resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve, which is a C D resolution. So if you did that, you know. We do conditional rezones all the time, I mean, that's, that's not abnormal. You know, I just didn't, you know, I wasn't, I didn't really work on this that much, I just drafted this, I haven't really thought through whether that would be the logical thing to do, I guess. I mean, there's, when I was pointing out the fact that, yeah, you can, you know, once you resone it to M one, it can be used as any M one use, I was saying that more along to get. Long as I'm getting you to think about that, to decide if that's, you know, what you wanted to do and.
So instead of rezoning it to M one, we say we'll rezone it.
No, we would rezone it to M one conditional on that it could be used as that pursuant to that.
So no other business could purchase the property? And change it to, or no other owner, or he could sell it and then that person couldn't change it to a different M one prep business, it would have to be a storage.
Right, and that's where I, you know, not drafting it here, I have template resolutions that I use that have, or ordinances that have the, the recision language. That we put in them, that says that it's automatically rescinded, I just can't do that from memory, I don't know. Not smart enough to do that, so, but I. So you could do that if that's what you want to do, and I think if you wrote that in, you could just add a sentence that says. The, the rezoning ordinance. Hey, strike that ordinance. Twenty twenty one dash oh three. Will be.
Are they the zoning ordinance that we?
Yeah. Automatically rescinded if the use of the property. Deviates. From Orinoco City Council Resolution twenty twenty one dash. Yeah, shot twelve.
Yeah.
That make sense? It's something like that, I have better language, but that's. Typically, I mean, typically when you do, a lot of times there's, I mean, more, most of the time we don't do conditional rezonings, we just rezone it without any conditions. You know, when you're conditionally rezoning something, the ones that I've typically done were, have been larger developments. Where there's large development plans, for example, the Fastenal Corporation ripping down a whole city block and building a new. Headquarters in downtown Winona, like that was a conditional rezoning or, um, big, bigger developments like that. That's what we typically do if, if it needs a rezoning. And with the Fastenal one didn't need a rezoning, but that's an example of a project that would need that.
So.
This didn't strike me as that project, but I, you know.
So to move forward with this for, for tonight's meeting so that we can move forward. Can, can we pass it with?
The exact language though, I mean, in ordinance.
Edited language.
Yeah, the exact language, it's not like, sometimes we change, you know, resolutions, we just say. With the amendment that we're going to change the fourth condition in the resolution, because, and you summarize it, I think that's, as long as you're very closely summarizing it, that's fine, but if we're in ordinance. You have to have the exact language, that's what I would say.
So we need to move.
Right, I'll read it and then you can just affirm what I say if that's what you want to do. And then I'll give it to the, is that what you want to do?
So this is where ordinance twenty one twenty dash three, the rezone.
I don't, I still don't understand if that's really what you want to do, if that's what you want to do, I can read this.
I think, I mean. That sounds like a really good option, because I think it addresses Lori and Lizzie's concerns and then it also allows us to allow this business owner to.
And would you be okay with that?
I think so.
And what that says is if Austin decides he wants to sell it to someone else. For, you know, to keep the business as it is, we're good. But if he wants to sell it to someone else and they, you know, the decision is, well, I want to put convenience store there, whatever it is, then it's rescinded.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I haven't fully thought through this, but I think that's okay. I mean, typically the, the conditions that we're putting in these aren't long-term use conditions, they're typically. Conditionally rezoned on the fact that you follow through with the attached development plan, you build that, you build that which is attached. You don't deviate from that, it's rezoned if you build that.
Build and operate.
Uh, yeah, so basically. You know, this is a little different and then you're rezoning it and saying. You know, I, I don't see any reason why this wouldn't be illegal or this wouldn't be legal. Excuse me, why it wouldn't be legal, it's just not, it's just not normal, so I, I think you can do that, I think you can do that.
Want to be sure we're clear, so we're talking about adding a section four to the re zoning ordinance?
So I'll read it, so if you wanted to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh three. As drafted in the packet with the exception that a section four would be added to read the property is rezoned to the. On the express condition that the property be used as a vehicle storage lot pursuant to Orinoco City Council Resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve. And, and then the next sentence would say ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh three will be automatically rescinded. If the use of the project deviates from ordinance, excuse me, from Orinoco City Council Resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve.
Yeah, that's camper and bolt storage, I view, right?
Whatever, yeah, that's, I didn't think, whatever it is, yeah.
So as we look at the, as we look at the, uh. The resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve. The C U P, we don't need to add any wording for that one then.
Unless the council wants to add other wording. Well, it is just a recommendation.
No, I think, I like your recommendation, I think that, you know, the piece is.
It's important to note that, I mean, they're putting these, these things in here, and this is a recommenda, I mean, it's in the packet as if I drafted it or if someone.
You have to accept it.
You have to accept it, it's your decision, not, not my decision.
Okay, so should we move forward with the ordinance?
We just have to make a motion.
Well, we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh three.
Oh, this was discussion.
So this is an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
You can just say what I said.
All those in favor of what Mike just said? And we'll get it in the language, then it's correct.
Do we need a?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, good, that was a voice vote. So, okay, now back to the original motion then, for twenty twenty one dash oh three to rezone from B two to M one. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the ordinance twenty twenty one oh three with amendment as agree to signify by saying aye in a voice vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Oh, that's approved.
Can I just interrupt for just a second, is there anything else that you will be addressing tonight, um, that requires the sheriff's office?
I don't, um, I don't believe so.
Unless Mike says we're doing illegal things.
Thank you.
I hope you can sleep tonight.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, not, not now, but later.
Um, and you guys want the speed sign, correct?
With the study, yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, the sign, our sign.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll have city staff call, with Mark Chambers, or who else?
I, I can set it up, I just need to know that you guys need it and as soon as we can, we'll get it rounded up and get somebody to get it up here.
Just let city staff know and we'll make, we'll let the public know we're doing it and why we're doing it and.
Good, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, then we have a resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve. Which is our conditional use permit for outdoor storage. Exhibit A and B. Make a motion to accept that resolution.
Motion, I make a motion, we accept that resolution twenty one dash.
Twelve, twelve, yes.
Twelve, yeah.
Give a second.
Went through the P and Z, it met all the criteria as noted. The conditions that P and Z stipulated, and we added the two exhibits, talking about the green belt. And as well as the, uh, application itself. The comments? All right, seeing none, all those by voice vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Parks and trails is the next item, we are looking at, um. Making your parks healthy, more healthy, by installing, proposal is to put in these. Dog bag dispensers. Throughout our eight parks, seven parks, and so we have a quote here for these dog playstations, quantity of sixteen. Six, up to fifteen hundred dollars. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of these dispensers as well as the bags. Well, to fifteen hundred dollars. For a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay.
How, so these are going to have to be refilled. And then where are the garbage cans to put?
That's a good question, and. Parks and trails talked about it and was one of those, we have garbage cans now and we know that they are being used from. Public works picking them up, that they are getting the bags dropped off and the dispensers. Uh, we're putting the, so the thought was to install the. Dispensers basically at the entrance to all the parks, as well as done by the playground materials or playground areas. Which there are. Waste cans now, and the question is whether or not we need more, and we're going to kind of see what, how the activity. Works out, are the containers in the right place that we have today, and if not, we'll consider adding more complaints, because they're relatively expensive. And we thought we just kind of start with this as our. Demonstration to the citizens that we're doing something and kind of let them decide. If they're going to abuse it or take advantage of the waste cans we have or add more cans in the future.
And my other question.
Sure.
Sorry, y'all, um, are these just straight plastic, are they recycled, what's the environmental impact?
I'm not your Kane, would you mind coming to the podium?
Yeah, so these are all weather, they're painted, powder coated, they can be outside.
Garbage bags.
Oh, the garbage bags, yeah, they're plastic.
You were joking with me.
They're plastic, yeah.
They're like a gallon sized bag, I'm guessing.
Sure.
I think because they're standard poop bags.
So, yes, the bags are plastic and the dispensers are, uh, weatherproof, powder coated. Uh, we're going to attach them to existing signs and, uh, like Ryland said, we're gonna, this will be our trial run. We'll see where cans are needed.
Did we look into any sort of recyclable plastic is the other piece of the puzzle?
I, I could, do you mean biodegradable?
Well, I just could see people coming through and saying. City of Orinoco is now supplying plastic bags that are. Flying all over the city and the bags are not environmentally friendly and how dare they? Poop is more environmentally friendly than these bags.
I, I know these are the same bags that High Island uses. It's a good question, I can't answer that many.
I mean, if you want to kick your dog's poop off the trail and into the weeds.
My dogs don't go on the trail freely.
Right now, we're not cleaning them on the garbage. So on the, on the container itself, they're very vaguely, you can see like there are three decals. And they just kind of reemphasize of the dogs being on a leash, pick up after your dog. And more of an attention to. Healthy areas with picking up your. Dog poop in every sort of.
Is poop a problem?
Yeah.
What's that?
Is poop a problem?
There's a lot of people who walk there, I think specific areas of this town, there's, like, if you pay attention to the citizens page or any of that, there's, there's a lot of that. A lot of dog poop talk over the years, but our issue, so with parks, our thought is, so we, I don't know if you know, not many people do know, we have amazing trails.
Right.
And we're getting more.
Wonderful.
And we're getting more and more.
Yep.
And we're, people are using them, and if there is, there is, I mean, the more I walk on them, the more I see it too. But then we thought, okay, well, we are not going to give people the option to leave it, we're going to provide them with everything, and if you go to any. Small town with our trails, it's very standard, it's what everybody's providing, and I think. It's a friendly thing to do for the community and provide it, but. I do understand what you're saying.
I've just seen a lot of people's poop bags laying on the ground too, so I think what you're saying is adding trash cans.
Yes.
As needed.
As needed, but I could see it backfiring on us and having people either taking all the bags or. Just taking them, picking it up and then I'll, I'll just pick it up later and setting it down somewhere, because they don't want to carry it.
That's why we're gonna, like, we've, like, identified areas where we think we'll probably need a garbage can, so we. Like, there's, like, an Orinoco Park, for instance, at the trailhead, probably would put one down there, you know, just near. So there's a, yeah, we're watching that, and I think, um.
At the same time, we want to make, if we do decide, and most likely we will, but we want to make sure that. That they're in a place where it's, it's convenient for residents, but it's also convenient for public works people to make, take care of.
True.
Right.
So we don't. That goes both ways too, you know, like, if you put a garbage can near a parking lot.
Yeah.
Everyone's going to fill it up, they're going to take their car out there, so.
That's true.
It's, it's a, it's a balance, we don't want them a half mile out in lake bed, but. We want them where people are going to use them, so, like Ryland said, this is just a, our starting point and we'll, we'll work with it.
We're really hoping to do a lot of fun stuff with the trails in the future, and I think this is a good start to get people out there and using them and.
But you see, you're right, you do see a lot of people carrying bags, and this is obviously going to be a convenience for them now, people that just walk the streets, they got to bring their own, of course. We're not going to put them on every corner, but, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, King. Any other comments? All those in favor of the purchase of the poop bags, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Approved. Uh, Kane, while you're there.
Yeah.
Let me hit these other.
Yeah, let's talk.
We got a couple of tree.
I have questions.
Tree items, uh, one and two, we're going to kind of combine into a discussion here.
Yeah, so, taking over from Dan, uh, he had a couple quotes out there from last year, this spring. Treating the ash trees, there's nine total, two here at City Hall, seven at Orinoco Park. After looking at the trees and, uh. We decided not to treat the trees, trees are too far gone to, to benefit from the treatment. We did go ahead and look at some hazard trees, like I said, we're kind of combining these two here, and there are hazard trees. We had a, a initial quote for twelve hundred and today we found additional trees. The, the quote you see here for two thousand dollars is what I am requesting.
I didn't do this right away, Tim, good. Before Memorial Day.
Yes.
What's a hazard tree?
Uh, dead tree, dead limbs. Something that could fall, Carroll Cowan Park, there's the, uh, frisbee discourse up there, there's a lot of dead trees, a lot of dead limbs. The more you, the more you look, the more you find, so.
Trees really creep up on you too, got to watch out for them.
So the trees down at River Park, you didn't find any that was worthy of taken down now? Okay, that's fine.
I want my yard.
There's a number here.
I make a motion that we approve the two thousand dollar quote for Harvest.
Second.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Appreciate Harvest getting on this right away before it's real busy. All those in favor, seeing if I'll be saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, that's approved? We go to, let's just jump over to Bob the Bug Man, did we get that quote in our packet or not?
Yes, it's in your packet.
Oh, Bob the Bug Man did come out here and treat City Hall last year. I would suggest doing it again, old building, lots of places for insects, rodents to get in.
Can you explain the cellular comment? How it operates? This is just reading of it, water meter, right?
Oh, we're on Bob the Bug Man.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good, thank you.
What is your recommendation to do all of these or to do?
Yeah.
One of them or?
Yep, yep, speak with Carolyn and Renee and Jim, the consensus is to, to treat for everything. It's, uh, it'd be a twelve month guaranteed rodents, insects.
Very scared of rodents, very, very. I will go home if I see one. I'm serious.
Do you want, we could bring in snakes.
No, I don't do that either.
Bring a cat?
I'll have a city cat.
I'd rather have a snake.
No, be a cat.
Oh, that's a good cat.
That'd be a good story.
We have two mice after election in here.
Make a motion?
I will make a motion that we use and accept the offer or the bid from Bob the Bug Man for all three services. From a total cost.
So it's eight hundred on number one.
Minus twenty percent.
Twelve hundred dollars?
How, how he's got the discount in there, I, I'm not sure how.
Yeah, this is seventy-six minus twenty percent.
Can I do, can I say for a maximum of? Per service?
So number three is just one time, one year, one time per year?
Yeah, what's that gonna do? That ain't gonna do much.
This doesn't say anything about repeating.
That's the interior service, so.
Yes, interior service.
Those stupid beetles, they get in everywhere, that's probably what it is, like the.
I guess it's for every, for any time we see something, if required, we would spray.
No, I bet it's preventative, isn't it? Oh, if it would be required, so that would be. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of a combination of the services he did last year. So I, I, I'm not quite sure what exactly he did last year.
Can I put up for a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars? That would cover it?
That would cover it.
Okay.
Close to it.
Four times service with a twelve month guarantee.
I'd rather put a limit on it than, a limit to cover the main things, but not to have a just open check.
Right.
So you.
Can you make a motion?
Yes.
She did.
I did.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, thanks for getting me through. Since you did.
And this ash tree one?
We sold on this Bob the Bug.
Get the vote first, yeah.
Yeah, but did I hear you say you're not doing anything with?
We're not treating the ash trees anymore.
Yeah. All those in favor of Bob the Bug Man, up to fifteen hundred dollars, seeing if I'll be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved?
Maybe get another quote next year. I don't know.
On tractor water meter?
Uh, the water meter. Currently, we have a water meter that we have to check daily, weekly. We have to contact all the contractors, track all their water usage. It's, it's a pain, takes a lot of time and, and for what we're charging for water too, doesn't really make sense. We just had a, a user that had four hundred gallons, but city staff took the water meter in and out with the freezing temperatures and the four hundred gallons of water they used didn't cover hardly any of that staff member's time. So this new meter, we would read with our, our current reading technology. Every month, we drive through town and we read everyone's water meter. It tells you how much was used and in the future, city sewer, we're gonna have a lot of water usage for the, the drilling, the contractors in town. This would be a way to track it monthly. From that data we collect, we could divide it up with all of our contractors. How we use it in the future will need to be tweaked, how we bill. But this is a way to report all of the water that goes through that hydrant.
And that will help us with our state reports.
Correct, just, just tracking what we use in this city, what we, what we pump out of the wells, what we sell through the meters. And then fire department, unmeasured connections, pool fills. And then now this contractor. I, I believe in the future, we, we will purchase more of these. If, if, if this first one does work out, I believe in the future, if we had these and say, we had a couple sitting on the shelf, somebody wanted to use one, we could assign it to that contractor. Kind of like last year, Bevcon put in all the fiber. They had a main contractor filling up daily. We could assign it to that contractor. Every month, we would have a billing, we had a total. And it would be, it would be processed just like our monthly water meter reads.
How's that sound, Joe?
Seems reasonable to me.
Well, I move then to approve sixteen, or sorry, eleven sixty-four for metering technology solutions for the water meter equipment. Good?
Metered, yeah.
For a second?
Next second.
Jim? Thank you. All right, these are readily available, far as you know?
I believe so, yeah.
All right. All those in favor, seeing if I'll be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that's approved? I think that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is the construction of the wall on Minnesota Avenue. And Joe, you just wanna make a quick comment about when we can see the bids or what we need to do with a special meeting or?
So the works, works in progress. We'll have the plans done in the next ten days to two weeks and then we'll solicit quotes. So we'll have quotes back for the council's consideration at the general meeting.
Okay, so we don't solve it?
We'll give the contractors at least a couple of weeks to look at it and turn around the quote.
And are we, just to bring up Mr. Thonson's concerns, this will be done before Gold Rush? Can we make that?
I would not recommend putting that requirement in the contract. You can, it might cost you a fair amount of money.
Or a, well.
We can put in the requirement that they're not working during, during Gold Rush, that's what I would normally do. But if, you know, if you're gonna be very specific as far as when work can or can't be done, then whether people have time within their schedules, there's only a handful of people that do the work. So if they've got a busy July, for example, and you say you can't work in July, or that I work has to be done in July. People, you know, it's a competitive thing and the more restrictions you place on a contractor, the, typically the higher the cost. So I would say, normal thing that we would do is, you know, there's no work within certain windows, the Fourth of July window, the Gold Rush window, but aside from that, you know, I would, I would let them finish the project by October thirtieth. Would be reasonable in my estimation. Give people time to fit it in their schedule and that will give you the most competitive bid.
I don't need to stretch it out that long.
What's that?
I don't know, then, why would we wanna stretch it out that long?
You know? Is.
I know what you're saying when you're putting timelines on, but.
That's what I would do.
I, I think when you do that too, then they see an opportunity to push it out further.
Right, yeah. So, you know, there's that, that they'll, they'll fit it to fit it in their schedule.
Are these local contractors, for the most part?
Um, for this size of wall, I don't know that you're gonna get people traveling a way that.
So much?
For the size of project, you, you probably won't get people traveling a long way.
So yes.
Yes.
So more local than.
That's nothing Jacy can handle, so.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's not a normal thing for.
Yeah, I mean, it's. You could do the excavating.
He, he could probably do it, I, I'm not saying he can't, I, I'm just saying I, I don't know that he normally does that type of thing.
All right, well, um. Yeah, I don't think we, I mean, we've got a lot of money in our ready, but more money with the time period, I don't think we could really. It'd be nice if it was done for Gold Rush, I know that's, but I, I guess. Asking a lot.
Well, and I just think the landowners too wanted it done, you know, for summer.
I think it'd look nicer if it was done for Gold Rush.
Yeah. I think we can. Yeah, I know you'd like to have it done sooner and I would encourage you not to know it, you won't get, we won't process any, process any complaint to get about tall grass, so, but he's, he's the kind of person that likes to have it, it's nice. Okay, we'll go with it, unless there's strong opinions, we'll go with that, coming back in June and October thirtieth.
So we can talk about that then.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Joe. Street Roads, the next item? You have a proposal here for us from our street review?
So last Wednesday, Jim and Kane, Ryland and I had the opportunity to get together and talk about or look at the condition of the streets, that being the pavement conditions, the striping. Those types of things, and we also talked about the maintenance history of the city. And what, you know, streets when they were paved, when they were last seal coated, when they were last crack filled or striped. Typically, we do a seal coat project every other year. Uh, and that seal coat project also typically includes crack fill and, or recently, it also includes striping. And so we did look at these items, the city's kind of set aside about seventy thousand dollars in the budget for those types of activities this year. And that we essentially identified two, two primary areas for seal coat. Those areas are illustrated in blue on the big map. So essentially the Cedar Woodlands development as well as the seven, six and seven street areas on the west side of Lake Shady Avenue. Those are essentially the two areas that we would not hold, we would do both a crack fill and then subsequently a seal coat. And then we also identified some restriping along Third Avenue and the Lake Shady Avenue corridor that was fog sealed, seal coated and fog sealed in twenty nineteen. And so the total of those costs is about seventy thousand dollars. We did, uh, we are proposing to essentially use the same seal coat process that we've used in the past where we use that gray eighth inch trap rock. Uh, one thing that we are doing, we've gotten complaints over the years about addition, you know, aggregate kind of accumulating after the initial sweeping is done after the seal coats typically sweep seven to ten days after the initial seal coat's done. And as we go through the fall, then there's additional loose aggregate that accumulates. And so I've added cost item for having contractor come in and do another sweeping in the fall. It's about twenty-five hundred dollars to have come back. It's about nine cents a square yard. And so that's really what's kind of proposed in terms of this year's work, based on our meeting and what we've kind of done in the past and what we have budgeted. If you want to proceed with this or if you want to modify it, we certainly can, but we can go ahead and solicit quotes. And again, we bring that back to you in June for approval and then the contractor's execution through the rest of the summer.
So the, what these, would these areas not be affected at all by the water and sewer projects?
Really not, no.
No. One reason for choosing. The city sweeping, I think if we're allowed to inspect after they do the first sweeping, rather than, I think if they should get approval that they did the first one, what like they said they were gonna do versus spending money for a second one, that may eliminate some additional cost. Certain areas that are swept as well as we would like. But typically, I've seen good experience, I know Jim has had not, not had a good experience, but I, it's just something we need to watch, I guess, when they do the first sweeping.
So this would be the same people we contracted with?
We would get quotes, so it's competitively bid.
Okay, so.
Process, there's only a handful of people that do this type of work, but we get quotes from them and we bring them back to the council. So we'll typically award the low quote.
Even for the sweeping?
No, it's, it's really one package, so.
Okay.
The people that do the seal coat.
Yes.
Do their own sweeping.
We have seventy-five thousand in the budget for street maintenance, so this covers the seventy thousand, so we're. So I make a motion that we approve the proposal of the twenty twenty-one crack fill, seal coat and pavement marking recommendations from Stan Tech. And ask them to solicit quotes and bring them back to the June meetings. All right, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, seeing if I'll be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose? That's approved? Planning and zoning. We have a, we've talked about the SD additional use permit. The next two items are kind of a sequential item. One is a condition that we have, it's your packet regarding code one fifty-one dash one sixteen. Regarding using additional use permits in a residential R1. Point number F, which is highlighted. It contradicts what we have. One. Point number two on the email, that's in the, in your packet. Condition F under, to require CP is a necessary building does not meet one fifty-one dash oh fifty-four, which is in the conditional use permit section, I believe, it's not on our, it's not in the packet, but that's what it is. So this action here is to remove condition F in code one fifty-one one sixteen. More of a cleanup of our codes that interact between each other. So I make a motion that we approve removing condition F in 151.16.
Can you, oh, you don't, can you give us a little background?
I don't have any of this in my packet.
I was there. Do you have Paul's email?
The 151-116 should be in your packet.
So Riley, will you just give up update? Because it was you, you and I were at the meeting, Lizzie and Lori were not. And Jim was, of course, at the P and Z meeting, but can you give an update on what this is regarding and why we would change it?
In 150, well, see... This is in regards, just kind of give an overall story. This is regards to a gentleman at 528 Vintage Road Martines. He's asked, he's a, currently, he's a, he's a residential unit, lives up here. And there's 10 acres right here, I believe it is. It's residential. And he wants to build a building that's 16-foot-high walls. The zoning for that R1 allows an overall height of the building to be 16 or 18 feet. So he's put in a variance in this residential, he wants a variance for the building, has 16-foot-high walls, which means that the building is 22, 23 feet high. It's a storage equipment building that he's looking for. So he's, so that, because it was a residential, this variance conflicted with what was in the conditional use permit in section 151-054. Saying it requires a variance because we had a higher building than what was allowed in R1. And... Mike, I'm drowning, so...
Yeah, I don't, I'm confused.
So there's, without 151 here with us, we really can't...
Oh, I wish Paul was here. He did a really good job of explaining it.
So I, I looked at the issue way a long time ago when that guy first asked. He hadn't applied yet. He just asked, can he build a nice, I looked at it and said he needed a variance. I had not been involved with it, but, so I guess I'm... So you're taking this out of this, you want to delete, amend the city code to remove the listed conditional use for detached accessory building, so that this guy doesn't have to get a CUP? Is that basically what?
Right, and then schedule a public hearing at the June P and Z meeting for the variance itself. We're not approving, we're not approving the variance here tonight.
Right.
We're just setting a public hearing to talk about his variance. But before we do that, we want to take this conflicting condition F out of R1.
Well, how, okay, why is it conflicting, I guess? Hold on.
I can't tell you for sure.
Paul has said, Paul made the statement that it didn't make sense that he should have to do that. Or, you know, this whole conditional use, he should really just have to count for a variance.
Because the conditional use would not, he wouldn't meet the conditional use, is what.
Right.
That was the issue, like, nobody would, basically. Nobody, if they ever tried to put up anything in town, nobody could ever meet the conditional use.
And that they should just come, they would ask for a variance normally, rather than go through the whole conditional use.
Yeah, okay, we did look at this. I remember that.
Yeah, Paul referred, Paul mentioned...
Called me back afterward.
Right, he mentioned you, that you were involved with this.
So, okay, then this, okay. So that's, they're really not connected. I mean, I think there's two separate issues. If you don't want to make people get conditional use permits for detached accessory buildings used by the owner for personal storage. So there's two things going on here. There's a use, you can't do use variances. They're not, they're not legal in Minnesota, so... You know, the variance is just for the height restriction. So it says it can only be 16 feet high, I think, or, is that right?
Overall height.
The overall height of a building in R1 can only be 16 feet. If you want to build higher than that, you gotta get a variance to build higher than that. But then separately, you would also need a use permit under the current reading in the code, because the current reading in the code says, in an R1 district, it's a permitted use to have a house, single-family dwelling, that's up in the earlier section. It's permitted to have a home occupation. It's permitted to have temporary buildings incidental to one of those two things. But it's not permitted to have a detached accessory building that's used for personal storage. So if you take that out, then people will be able to build, you know, they might have a house with a two-car attached garage, and then they'd be able to build further garages without getting a use permit. But a use permit is just how you're using the property. So there's a separate garage ordinance. It says buildings have to be 16 feet tall or less, essentially. And so you'd have to comply with that. The problem I have with it is there's no ordinance in the packet. So how can you amend an ordinance without an ordinance? I mean, I drafted multiple, if you look at the, I didn't know we were doing this. I mean, if you look at the, the one I did for the tiny house development, I mean, or the rezoning ordinance, I mean, that's actually a paper document. How are you gonna publish it?
Is it ordinance or code?
Yeah, it's an ordinance amendment. An ordinance amendment is a city code amendment. So to do that, you'd have to have strike through, like the animal ordinance, they send you all this strike through language in it, where you're gonna delete text. You'd have, you know, this one would probably just be one single page, be real short. But it would have that paragraph abstract stricken through and deleted. So, but I don't think that really matters. I mean, I think what you can do is just, now that I know that this is what you want, you want to do, I'll just type up that for the next meeting. You don't have to make them get a CUP, just do the variance, the normal variance process, whatever that is.
So a public hearing for the June meeting?
Fine, just do the, do whatever the variance process is at the June meeting.
Okay.
We'll do the ordinance amendment at the June meeting, and just tell them we're likely gonna adopt the ordinance.
Sure.
Change, you don't need a CUP, but tell them also in the event the council changes their mind, I mean, I want to pre-presume the vote, you know, if they don't want to amend the code. You know, just tell them it's gonna be conditioned on, the variance permit, if granted, will be conditioned on removing the CUP language, which is currently pending before the council. And just write that in the variance resolution. And then, so the, correct me here, edify me, so the variances in OrnoCo, those are recommended by the planning commission and then approved by the council?
So Paul's emails, yeah, do you have Paul's email in yours?
Yeah.
So, it kind of, he does a really good job of explaining exactly what he is asking for.
Approved denied a CUP rezon.
Number two.
Yeah. Endorse and set the public hearing for the, oh, got it, right, he knows what he's doing. Paul's good.
Right.
So you're, you're not amending it tonight. You're just getting the council's temperature and then setting a public hearing if you're likely gonna vote for it. Got it, yeah, that makes sense.
Bring this back to the council in the June meeting, so the guy can move forward if that's the council's decision.
So it's a zoning ordinance, so you gotta remember, zoning ordinance, you have to have a public hearing.
Right, and that would be June...
You don't require two meetings in OrnoCo, I know that. So you can have the public hearing and also adopt it all at the same meeting.
Yes, at the planning and zoning, June 10th meeting, I think is what you're asking.
Well, I think the, but that's my other question, so just, ordinances have to be adopted by the council. But, but a variance, you're gonna give somebody a...
Need to follow up on that. We can follow up on that.
Just check your code. I think, I think the council has to do those too. I think it's just a recommendation from the planning commission and then the council. But you could do that all at the June meeting.
You can do it all at June.
I thought you were just changing the code tonight with nothing in the packet.
No, I...
I'd stop you. Okay, I don't think.
So Paul's notice, endorse and set the public hearing for amend removal of conditional F under 151-116 for UTSB. We will have a public hearing notice for the June 10th meeting, so I think...
But we can go ahead and pass the variant?
No.
He's not asking for that, though. I think he just, he just wanted to set a public hearing for the...
I do think that, maybe Paul was thinking that we had, and we didn't, we were supposed to adopt an ordinance, a strike through, to do that tonight.
But my point is, I don't think you need to do it tonight if, you know...
We can do it to see...
Just do it later. Just tell this guy not to apply for a CUP until this gets ironed out.
Has he applied for his variance and sent the check to us yet?
No, he, he was waiting to hear.
Yeah.
On this, he said he had started things, but...
What's this person's name? Is it Adam?
Adam.
Yeah.
Right, so, okay. I make a motion that we set the public hearing notice for June 10th, 7:05 PM.
June 10th, 7:05?
7:05 for the variance of 528 Vintage Javelin. Vintage Truro, I'm sorry, Mr. Truro, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions, Eric? Paul's in favor, so he's probably saying aye.
Aye.
Last item is a new committee member. Wendy is here tonight. Wendy Phillips is a new committee member on the P and Z. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendation by P and Z for Wendy to be the new member of P and Z.
Aye, second.
Sorry we made you wait this long.
No problem. I'm getting an education back here.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approved, welcome Wendy.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight. Water and sewer, these are mostly updates. Joe, you want a quick comment on the, how the temporary and permanent easement acquisition went with?
We had a public open house on May 10th, 11th. We had about 15 people sign easements and another four or five promised to sign easements, and they've been kind of trickling in. But we had a good, good turnout, relatively speaking, and people were positive. We didn't have anybody really object to the easements. People had good questions that we tried to answer, and at this point now, we've started to reach out by telephone and call people. So I'm trying to work through that process via meetings. I met with the property owner tonight and calling people on the phone, and then also sending emails and trying to ask questions. So it takes time. We're working through it. But no real red flags at this point. The more challenging piece is on the low-pressure system. Mike and I have been kind of struggling to figure out or get, get guidance from Public Facility Authority and MMB in terms of what agreements really are necessary for the low-pressure systems, whether we need access easement and/or a consent agreement or some sort of a license agreement that'll allow us to operate and maintain those facilities on private property. They're less than responsive and less than consistent in terms of everything that we're getting from them. So I guess we're struggling with that, but it's not for lack of effort.
You can't be the first city to do this.
How do you think so?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, we asked them, for example, of a city that had built a new facility, and they couldn't come up with one. But it's just, I mean, I think it's just unique, the way, this is my, my theory on it, because I don't, I mean, this is in my area really, but those low-pressure, the number of low-pressure systems you're getting is a lot. I mean, it's, that's a lot compared to other places, and, and they're unique-shaped lots, and there's other issues with them. So doing easements for all those would be, I don't think is necessary. I don't think Joe thinks is necessary, but you ultimately, you have to get the funding from them. So they have to tell you what's okay and what's not okay, and that kind of thing. And then we're also drafting, then meeting in conjunction with that, we just started drafting the ordinance. The ordinance will have language in there that basically says if you connect to the system, your connection is consent to allowing the city to maintain its utility infrastructure on your property. So, and I think there's other ordinances that have that, and that might state PFA and MMB, but it might not. I mean, we don't know, so...
Oracle Estates Income Survey?
The planning results of the income survey are back, and in terms of participation, it's very poor. I think that that might be a function of some misinformation that's been disseminated amongst park members about the intent of...
Disinformation or misinformation?
Paul, what you want. So we're, you know, I've developed kind of a one-page summary of the project, and we're looking at ways to get that information out to people and potentially resubmit surveys to folks. Trying to get OrnoCo Estates leadership or management involved in the process so they can help reinforce that. We get the facts out and tell people, you know, it's really in your best interest. It's really in everybody's best interest to fill out the firm's survey and send it in. But it's been a struggle.
You have to have a certain response rate too, right?
Yeah, we've got to be around 70, 65, 70%, somewhere, somewhere in there. And so we are far below that, and then we're getting some folks, I understand, responding and, you know, just putting fictitious things in. Kind of disappointing, frankly, trying to help people.
Can the survey company do anything to increase the yield?
Well, we're working with SITA. They're the independent third party that's doing this. And so we've kind of talked about different options, how we might educate people and reach people. And given the financial constraints that we have and the time limits, that's been challenging. If you've got great ideas, I think you would take them. But we've kind of looked at, you know, can we have a little public gathering on site? You know, maybe get people there, or do something through the resident Facebook page that's not associated with management. And then, or maybe do something with their, you know, they, they send out a monthly bill, right? And, you know, maybe some combination or all of those options to reach people would work, but... So we're, we're kind of sorting that out, trying to sort that out.
There's not like a spokesperson or anybody you have found that would be willing to...
No, and frankly, OrnoCo Estates has been pretty silent on the issue, which is, it doesn't make sense to me. We're gonna meet with OrnoCo Estates leadership Thursday. And this is one of the issues we will bring up. But we've been emailing them and asking them questions, and they just don't respond.
Yeah, I've had that same, just to...
You know, in...
In helping them with wanting to help them food shop, you know what I mean? Just like, just none, I don't ever get a response back from them. We do have a first responder fireman who knew, who lives there.
You know, having somebody that's willing to post facts on Facebook, that's not me or the city, might be helpful.
Right.
So if they're willing and able, that would really probably reach some people.
So it's, it's, the concern's been elevated to outside of the management here at OrnoCo Estates, to their, the company asset manager too, so we're hoping that'll help motivate a more positive response, but...
Is the survey digital or paper?
I think it's paper, and they, they were mailed it, and I think they need to mail it back.
Yep, that's, did we give them a means to mail it back?
We did. We got prepaid envelopes, well, seated it. There's a process, you know, there's a protocol that PFA has for income surveys, and you follow their process, or the results aren't legitimate.
So we can't go, make people, well, never mind, we can't help people sit down and complete the survey?
We can't go make people, well, never mind. We can't help people sit down and complete the survey?
I don't think we can. I don't know, but I don't think we can.
Right. Rats.
To be continued, but we'll.
Well, they might not, you know.
I'll look into, I need to find the contact name, but I'll see if.
That would be, I think that'd be tough. Because I, I don't have a contact, so.
At least get some feedback from this person of what they're hearing.
Yeah, that would be helpful too.
Because that's, that's kind of what resulted in the low surveys. A comment was made on Facebook and it was a very bad comment. They didn't respond, so.
Within their own group?
It's a private, private Facebook page.
And then someone brought that to your attention.
Yep. Okay, so good news on the Matthew.
Yep. So good news with Matthew, they ultimately accepted our original offer. And have been very gracious since our past discussion, the closing scheduled for two third.
Estimating joint for closure, yeah.
Nice work.
This might have been by email, but about getting the funds from PFA to pay for it, or is that still up in the air?
It's in the process. So I think that's happening.
So it's what?
It's sent off to PFA.
Okay. The request.
Yep.
The worst thing that would happen is we just delay closing if we couldn't get it, which is not a problem, I don't think.
Right. I sent it Monday.
Okay.
When I got back.
Maybe about a week turnaround?
One to two, you know?
But they're aware of it. Joe's been obviously forwarding documents, so they're aware of it. So okay, just a couple unfinished businesses here and we'll wrap up. We have the chicken and pet ordinance, which is in process. Maybe we'll have something in June meeting. It's kind of the target.
Yeah, Mike sent us, did you read it over it?
Was it?
Did you read over what Mike sent?
I sent the draft to Jim and Dana because they were kind of the subcommittee that were done.
Was it just today?
Last week.
Last week, yeah. It's okay. I mean, I, I knew it wouldn't be ready for.
No, and we can just talk about that, like
Yeah.
The three of us can chat about. I took notes, but no need to discuss tonight.
Yep.
Next item is just a Bema River restoration update. We're getting close to releasing contracts for bids, I guess, is a plan.
So we're, we're getting close to completing the plan. So probably early June, maybe the first week of June. We might even want, if there's a potential to have a quick meeting to just approve the plan so we can send it out for bid.
Like a special meeting?
Yeah, potentially if that's possible, we might, might want to do that.
I have a question about what now that the water's down so low, it hasn't been down this slow in a while. There's tires everywhere again.
Really?
Yeah.
They washed downstream or what?
No, well, they've probably been, I don't know.
Or from a junkyard downstream.
Yeah, they're downstream from the junkyard. I mean, the water's just lower than it's been in a long time and they're just, they're popping up. I mean, they're they're everywhere already again, or all of a sudden again. So I don't know how, is that something that, like, I almost just was like, I'll grab those. And I was like, eh, maybe not. What would I do with them? Just that.
Talk to Charlie Lacy, township president, and Terry Leary, who's a resident, has kind of been keeping MPC aware of the status of the junkyard, status of being cleaned up. See if we can
I mean, I don't.
Urge them to pay for some more cleaning up or something like that, like we talked about.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, this isn't new.
It's not new. It's just a matter of if we can get it to happen again, yeah.
Yeah.
So that project has to be done by December twenty twenty-one, the river restorations. North and the south channels. Next to the last item, we have a amendment, new business amendment to a license agreement to use public property. This is in conjunction with Tom Gathier's lots with his brother and brother-in-law and sister licensing agreement. So I had the license agreement, I guess.
I can do, I can just please discuss in two minutes. So in paragraph number one of the amendment, it says, this agreement shall terminate upon the following extension of the Riverwood Drive southwest southerly over the licensed premises or be the failure of the license to comply with the condition of the agreement. That used to have an additional condition in there that said if the property is transferred to a new owner, the agreement is terminated. And so if, to jog everybody's memory, or Lizzie probably wasn't on the council when this was happening, but that street dead ends. It's, it's developed to a certain point and then it's no longer developed and he owns the property directly to the south, I think. Is that right? And so he wanted to split a lot, which he successfully did, and then build his sister a house on the lot. And what I didn't understand when we drafted the original agreement is he was transferring key owns and he was deeding it to her. So that would trigger, so that came up in the title commitment. When they got title insurance, they said, oh, this license agreement's recorded against the property and says you can't transfer it. And this agreement will terminate and that would have resulted in the property being landlocked because that's the only access they have to the road. And so essentially what the agreement did, what it does is it just, it allows him to put gravel and connect directly to Riverwood Drive Southwest directly without, without having a driveway essentially. And, or his driveway would be in the public right of way. So he's using what is dedicated public right of way where we will end up putting the street whenever that's developed. And he didn't, what you would normally do is when somebody asks for this, you would make them extend the streets out, south, which would have been really expensive for just one lot, you know, because he's only developing one house. It's like if a developer was developing ten houses or fifteen houses, they would plat, plat it and they would extend the street and they would pay for that. And I suggested making him do that, but then I thought he didn't want to do that and just wants to build this one house. So we're letting him put a gravel driveway where the street will go eventually. And what this agreement says is he gets to do that and use it temporarily until we extend the street south. And then the agreement used to say, or it says, see if the property transfers ownership. And when he tried to deed it to his sister and they got, they got a title commitment, I guess, which is odd because he just beaded it to his sibling. So you know, you might not do that, that scenario, but they did and they couldn't get title insurance because of this. So he wants to, and he approved, his lawyer approved the agreement the way it was drafted. Neither one of us, I mean, I didn't know. I thought he was going to own it, so it didn't matter. And you would normally want that in the agreement, but I think in this case, it's fine, you know. Basically, as soon as you extend the, A is the important one, the extension of Riverwood Drive Southwest southerly over the licensed premises. So as soon as you decide to extend the road for development or for whatever reason, this agreement will terminate and I'll have to remove this gravel driveway and you'll be able to plow it. So anyway, this just takes out that condition that he can't transfer it to a third party. So he'll be allowed to do that. And if his sister wants to sell it to another third party, she'll be allowed to do that. You keep getting sold until you extend the roadway.
Make a motion that we approve the amendment, the license agreement to use public property. The other discussion? Favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
最后一个, we have a consent agenda motion.
Motion to consent agenda.
Second. Lizzie? Everything is here. So all those in favor? Seeing if I'm saying aye? Pose? Approved. Motion to adjourn.
Is that, is that a motion to adjourn?
Second. That's, that's a motion. All of the above. Alright, all of the favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Pose? Those at nine oh six. Thank you very much. Everybody?
So I'll call that woman on Thursday, I think. And you?